Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the December 17th Board Meeting to Order and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, and in Clerk Bussie's absence, I'll ask the Deputy Clerk to take the roll, please.
Okay, Trustee Saturn.
Present.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Present.
Trustee Ingraffia.
Present.
Trustee Keenley.
Present.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Present.
Also present, Highway Commissioner Nierdowski and Assessor Caricelli.
Any public comment?
Hi, I'm Lynn Frinzione with Branniger. I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you to Mike and Paul for helping us these last couple of weeks on the ditch cleanout. It looks fantastic. We made sure that the residents that were impacted are aware that is their responsibility going forward, but we really appreciate the partnership with the township in getting that taken out, because it was tough for any one person to do. Whoever you guys hired did a great job, so thank you very much.
Great, glad to hear it, thank you. Okay, any other public comment? Okay. Okay, you've been presented with the consent agenda. Would anybody, would any of the Board members like any items removed from the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Ingraffia, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee Nierdowski. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Ingraffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Okay, Item E, potential action on board minutes. You have minutes from the November 26th meeting. Any questions, changes on those sets of minutes? Okay, can I have a motion to approve these minutes as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Saturn.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Ingraffia. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Okay, all right. Item F, second review of the 600 Landmire building plans. So, we got a chance to review them both on paper and on the projector. Last week, we just printed out the copies. If you need additional copies, they're available to you. You have the original, so just to, as we referenced, there's from last month preliminary floor plan A, and you have color-coded, as well as a clean copy there. Revisions are floor plan B. Just as we refer, I will point out the changes that were made based on discussions and recommendations from elected officials and staff. I'll start with the assessor's office. So if you look at the color-coded copies, it's blended in with the administration, but its offices, it was on floor plan A, it was offices 114, 115, 117, and 118. Based on discussions with Assessor Caricelli, the, instead of occupying office 114 and 115, and those side offices off that main space, the assessor's office will give up 114 and instead occupy those side offices labeled office 115 and 116. So essentially shifting down. It was a recommendation by the assessor, made a lot of sense, because both offices will now open beyond that half-wall. Okay, all right, that was one change there. Going back to the community room, we had a recommendation from Trustee Saturn to put in a kitchen net. It's labeled break room 140, to the left of the community room. You can see there, it's 12 feet wide by six and a half feet deep. That will serve as a kitchenette similar to what we have here now. In addition, Clerk Bussie recommended, for our purposes, for the Board purposes, especially if we need to have executive session, and for other smaller meetings, having a conference room built off the main town hall room. So it's to the left of the, to the right of the community room, labeled Conference Room 143. Okay, that was an addition.
That room would be used for?
The thought was, having a conference room closer in the, if we had smaller community hall meetings, but more specifically, executive sessions, where we had to go into executive sessions and... Provides an additional multipurpose room, too.
Yeah, because we only had one conference room in the whole place, otherwise.
Then looking at floor plan, going over to general assistance, off the, I'm trying to think here, off the main vestibule there, we had passed the reception area to the right of the waiting room, had a, there was a corridor going into the food pantry, and also there was a subsequent corridor to the right side of, the second corridor right next to it, accessing general assistance offices. That's floor plan A. And floor plan B, that second corridor accessing the general assistance offices, labeled corridor 103, was moved over to the right side of those offices. Those are in, yeah, I was just going, I was double-checking, but those were the changes based on recommendations from staff and elected officials. Any questions about any of those, or any other part of the floor plans as presented? Okay, if there are none, just to give you a heads-up, I will be asking for a motion to approve these plans, these floor plan B as presented, so we can move to the next phase of creating bid documents that the Board will also approve, so that when we send those out, obviously for bids on this work. So, the architect will go to the next phase. Obviously, we have to put in the next layer, obviously, the electrical, plumbing, all of those things get added in, obviously, to be included in the bid document. So those, once we have those done, those bid documents will be presented to the Board as well, so.
So Plan B is the most recent?
Well, the Plan B is what represents the changes that were made. So if they're, that's, so I'll ask, were there questions about this, or concerns about this layout, or changes anybody wanted to recommend? I mean, we can, we're still gonna discuss it in, under Item J, under new business, it should actually be under old business, but I didn't catch that, but...
So the lending closet, you decided is a lot, you didn't need as much. There's some office space there now.
Well, the lending closet just opened up. We took out, well, we moved, well, we moved the file cabinets.
Okay.
With one of the offices, essentially office 134, we moved the corridor, and to make, and we put in the file room, we moved over to there, to the right of office 134. In short, in the size of 134, to provide for a space for a desk, for someone to man the lending closet and/or intern, and room for the lending closet. All right, we'll discuss, we'll have another opportunity to discuss that during the meeting. Okay. All right, reports, assessor's report. Connie?
You have my submitted report, and I think you'll see that we've been extremely active this year. And as far as that goes, we're anticipating next year to be virtually record numbers. A week ago today, I was down at the county building for the Board of Review yearly meeting, and we can discuss that later on when we discuss a resolution that I've proposed. Also on Friday, met with the Cook County Township Assessors Association, and they will be supporting a similar resolution to what you'll be, what you've been presented with. Also tomorrow, I'm meeting with the Northern Township Assessors with the newly-elected Assessor Kegy. I tried to get a preview of coming attractions when he was at our meeting on Friday, however, he decided to wait until tomorrow to spring whatever he's going to spring on us. I have to admit, right now, I'm kind of heartened. We had an opportunity Friday to meet with some of the new senior staff. They all seem to be very enthusiastic with working with the township assessors, and I find that very, very encouraging. Any questions?
Questions for Connie? Thank you, Connie. Okay. There's no Clerk's report, right? Yeah, no Clerk's report, Highway Commissioner's report, Art?
Just to give you an update, we are still waiting for permission from Kinder Morgan and Natural Gas Pipeline to get a permit to cross over their property to put our storm drains in there. Our attorney and our engineer, Mark, they've been working on it. Looks like the next meeting they're gonna have with them is on Wednesday, so, I know they're trying to get this done as long as the weather's warm, but it looks like they're still putting it off, so. Any questions?
Questions for Art? Thank you, Art. Okay, all right. Can I have a motion to accept the elected official monthly reports as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Saturn, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Ingraffia. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Okay, Item H, there's no correspondence, no old business. Under new business, you have Item 1, Resolution 2018-09, Amendment to the Elk Grove Township Health Reimbursement Arrangement. This is just something we were notified by our health insurance representative that we needed to have on file. Just to give you a little bit of background, we provide HSA dollars, but there are, when employees no longer qualify for HSA under federal law for a variety of reasons, we instituted a health reimbursement account, which is authorized in some cir, which is authorized, which is allowed when HSAs are not. So this is just something that's needed to be updated in our file and our documentation as having passed, so. Any questions about this resolution? Okay. Can I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-09?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Saturn, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee Nierdowski. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Ingraffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Okay, Item 2, the building plans for 1600 Landmire Road. Again, I'll ask if there's any questions, comments about floor plan B as was presented earlier.
Okay, the conference room is an addition that will be built onto the community room?
Off of, correct.
There's nothing, there's nothing there right now, that would be new construction?
What's, it would be, no new construction, it would be interior walls framed out, just like the community room itself, the storage rooms and the food pantry will all be built in existing, would be built on their existing roof.
Okay.
Which is the garage, so interior walls will be framed and built out.
Gotcha, okay.
Correct.
Okay, so it's just a matter of putting up walls?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, can I have a motion to approve preliminary floor plan B as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Ingraffia, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee Ingraff, Nierdowski. Any further questions, suggestions, comments?
What's the next step?
The next step is to let the architect know that we've decided on this floor plan. Then he has to go through the process of putting bid documents together, so going out to, obviously, fill in where all of the plumbing, electrical, where walls need to be built, you know, planning for the elevator, so, and putting exactly what needs to be done, what's built, what's existing, so all the changes that would be made, so that bidders can bid on the project. Those bid documents, those proposed bid documents will come to the Board. The Board will do two things subsequently. The Board will approve those bid documents. In addition, the Board will set a bid schedule, so when the bid goes out, when the bids are due, and so we can schedule the bid opening.
And if we find we need to make changes on these that aren't too crazy, we can still do that?
Throughout the entire process, I would be surprised if we wouldn't have to do that.
Okay.
So there's gonna be times where probably the architect or the builder comes back and says, maybe this isn't possible, or we need to make minor adjustments here at that point. Every step of the way, the Board will be informed of the process, the progress of the project, so, and then, you know, then we'll have to go through the entire process of the build-out, and then even through the aesthetics of flooring and paint and all that.
Any updates when Elk Grove might be?
Well, the original plan was for them to be out by February 1st. Last word we heard is that they will be out by February 1st.
Okay.
So, they're not, they're not, Elk Grove Village isn't saying, I don't think they're in a position to, I think there's, you know, a lot of things can happen as they finalize their new public works building, so, but they have, they have not been equivocal at all. I mean, they said we'll be out by February 1st, so.
And we are renovating the whole thing before we move in?
Unless the Board makes a change to that, I think that's best. I mean, the Board can make any kind of decision. If the Board wanted to make a decision to stop paying rent here and move, we could do it in phases. All of these things dealing with the building would all be Board decision, so, yeah. But that, I agree with that, I think that would be the best, is to have it all renovated and ready to move in.
Okay.
Do we vote? I don't think we voted yet, have you?
No.
No, no. Any other, any other questions, suggestions, concerns? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Ingraffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Okay, so presentation, Item 3, Presentation of Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Preliminary Tentative Budgets for Town Fund, General Assistance, Road District, and Sewer. So, a couple of things. One, I wanted to talk about the timeline, to see if there's any objections. So in the past, for as long as I can remember, for as long as I've been around, which sometimes has been around longer than others, other times, people have been around longer than I have, but I think for an extended period of time, we've used this process of preliminary tentatives, final tentatives, and then final passage. Since we moved up several years back, moved up the timeline for passing the budgets to coincide with the actual fiscal year, we've continued using that process. Budget proposals, having a preliminary tentative meeting where that's passed, and then a final tentative, and then a final budget. What I'm recommending, now that we have these proposed numbers, and the goal was this year to get them out even earlier than January, so that you have some time, we allow ourselves some additional time. But to have just the presentation tonight act as the preliminary tentative, I wouldn't ask you to vote on anything. All the law requires is that we have a tentative meeting. There's no requirement for a preliminary or final, just the fact that we have a tentative budget to sit on the table for 30 days. So what I'm asking the Board for this evening is to allow just the presentation and the dissemination of this proposed budget to act as the, what we have in the past as the preliminary tentative, give you a whole month to review it, ask questions, do research, recommend changes, and then in January, to come back and vote on a, whatever that budget ends up being in the January meeting, to be the tentative budget that would lay on the table for 30 days. And then in February, we would, after having that budget lay on the table for 30 days, vote on final passage in February. To do that, I mean, to do that, a couple of things would need to happen. We would need to change the Board meeting dates in January and February to allow for that 30 days, so I would recommend a January 21st meeting date and a February 25th meeting date. So essentially, we, January's meeting was scheduled for the 4th Monday, and we moved up the February meeting, so we could have 30 days from February to March. I'm just asking that we do that from January to February instead.
So, I'm sorry, the January meeting would move up to?
The 21st.
I'll be doing a phone-in for that one?
Okay.
If I have a knee replacement.
So the recommendation would be to have a meeting on January 21st, having been the tentative budget meeting, and then 30 days, we'd essentially move the February 19th, which was scheduled, to February 25th.
It doesn't matter that that's a holiday, does it? The February, the January?
The January meeting, it doesn't, we're not closed that day, so I wouldn't think that it would matter. Like I said, it is a, like I said, it just, it would serve as a tentative.
So you're recommending January 21st and February 25th?
Correct.
Do we have to vote tonight to change those?
No, essentially what I would do is I would call for those meetings. If there's no objection, I would just call, call for them as supervisor. And then, you know, the additional thing, obviously with our, our Board procedures, our Board meeting procedures having changed, this allows, like if there's any, if we do need a subsequent vote, if we don't have four votes on first passage, this gives us additional time, an additional month, to have a subsequent vote, so we can still keep ourselves aligned with the fiscal year. So if we needed to take a subsequent vote in March, we could still have the budget passed by 4/1, April 1st.
You're still reducing the number of meetings from four to three, am I understanding that correctly?
Well, what we, what we have done, let's say, last year, for example, I would take a meeting, right, and then it would serve, we're essentially, instead of doing preliminary and final tentative meeting, we're essentially, in having those two steps, we're, it's more of a text change. I mean, I'm essentially saying, budget proposal, tentative meeting, final passage, as opposed to preliminary, tentative, final tentative, and budget passage.
So we wouldn't have to do other meetings, we're gonna do it all in the Board meeting?
Yeah, we started doing that last year, where it would be, we would line it up, yeah. The only thing that would be different, I can't remember how we did the agencies.
We had a special meeting for them.
We had a special meeting for the agencies.
Last year, I don't think we did, but previous year.
That's the only, that's the only separate meeting that we would, I would anticipate Any objection to amending that schedule?
No.
Okay, I will call, I will call for that, and like I said, that gives us additional time, if we do need it in March, to continue budget discussions. Keep in mind, I mean, budget discussions can go, I mean, we used to pass the budget in June, which was just beyond bizarre to me, but, but this way, it gives us some extra time. So with that being said, everybody, you know, everyone has seen this type of budget before, has seen our budget as familiar, instead of going line by line, unless anyone would like me to, I'm happy to do it. This gives you the opportunity to examine the budget on your own, gives you previous budgets and act, well, gives you the current-year budget and year-to-date actuals, the proposed budget, the change in budget, but also actuals from previous years, just to give you different reference points, so that you're aware. So my thought was to allow, just to present this tonight, if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I don't necessarily know if it's, if it's worthwhile to go line by line. I believe we can do that in the tentative budget, which would be essentially the final tentative budget next month, if everyone's amenable to that. That gives you a month to examine, review, like I said, ask questions, to ensure that you're ready to take action in January. Does that make sense? Okay, please, yeah, please, if you have any questions, like I said, just the sooner the better, get in touch with us, we'll do our best to answer and answer any of your questions, but also make note of any recommendations you have, so that I can have all those suggestions with me as we go through the budget in January. All right, we will pick that up in January. Resolution, then, Item 4, under new business, Resolution Supporting Fair Hiring Plan for the Cook County Board of Review. Connie brought this to our attention. I'd ask her to step back up to the podium and provide us some background, if you would.
Thank you, Supervisor Sweeney. Chief Deputy Wagner and I went down to the Cook County Building a week ago for an 8:30 meeting. There is an annual meeting of the Commissioners of the Board of Review. This is a three-member panel. Each are elected separately per district. Our particular representative is Commissioner Dan Patlack, who has served our community, to my estimation, extremely well. He gives of his time, we do outreach programs together, and so I chose, as with my deputy, to go to this meeting, to show our thanks and our support for what he does for our taxpayers. Dan is a CIAO, he is a Certified Illinois Assessing Officer. He knows value. He also subscribes to the ethical mandate from the International Association of Assessing Officers, the Illinois Association of Assessing Officers, and the CIAO program. So, on attending this meeting, Dan was made chairman. It goes in rotation, this was his year. The county board has set aside funds for additional members, for analysts, because the number of appeals, which I'm sure you will not find surprising, have grown exponentially. Now, you also must understand that it's not just Dan seeing our taxpayers. All three Commissioners have to see all of the appeals. There has to be two out of three consenting to grant whatever action is taken. So all three are dealing with all of the appeals that go forward through the Board of Review. With the... With the allocation of additional funds for additional analysts, which are desperately needed, because of the two-to-one vote, Dan was told that one commissioner was getting so many, and the other one was getting so many, and he was getting one. Well, when you look at the sheer volume of appeals that goes through that board, it seems absolutely nonsensical that there should not be a fair and equitable allocation of resources, ergo, fair and equitable number of analysts to go through these. I was appalled. I will be quite frank with you. I walked out of there, I was angry. What this made me feel like was that what we were dealing with here was just another exercise in patronage. That does not work well for my taxpayers. It does not work well for your taxpayers. And so, in working with Commissioner Patlack, we're presenting this evening a resolution. And I would heartily suggest that you endorse this resolution, that there should be fair hiring at the Board of Review, that there should be, you know, the magazine for the International Association of Assessing Officers is titled "Fair and Equitable." And as a member of the assessment profession, I have to embrace that on all levels, not just on an assessment level, but on a behavioral level. And so, I would ask you to endorse this resolution that we could forward to the county board.
It's dated June 25th, 2018. Is that an error?
That is an error.
Okay.
We can amend that, I'm sure.
Thank you, Connie.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, so who made the, who was making the decision of how they got allocated? That's the one thing I didn't get answered.
The other two commissioners.
So they, so they, they decided.
It was a two-to-one vote, obviously, which is not acceptable. I mean, if, if I could capsulize my thought on this process, if we cannot expect our commissioners to be equitable in the hiring practices of their board, how can our taxing, our taxpayers be expected to think that they're going to get some sort of equitable treatment in their appeals?
And just for the record, even though it's divided into three districts across the county, they all are required to review the same appeals.
Absolutely. All appeals must go through all three commissioners' analysts, and we have to have two out of the three commissioners sign off to get a result.
So it's not a ma-, it's not a matter of difference in EAV, they all have to review the same number of files?
That's correct.
All right. Any questions for Connie? Any questions about Resolution 2018-10? Can I, may I have a motion to approve Resolution 2018-10?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Ingraffia, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Saturn. Any further discussion?
Just to change the date on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we'll have that, it'll be dated, it, yeah, so it'll be, it'll say December 17th, 2018. Was Bob the second?
Wait, Bob with Suell.
Oh, Bob and, and Suell, okay. All right. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn?
Aye.
Trustee Nuredowski?
Aye.
Trustee Ingraffia?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney?
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Hope it helps. All right. No executive session matters have come up. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Saturn, seconded. Seconded by Trustee Nuredowski. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.